Please say when. We're ready? All righty. Amy? How we doing there? Okay. Let's call to Arter, please.
Dr. Director Asner? Director Faulkner?
President.
Director Goodman?
Here.
Director Patrow?
Here.
Vice President Brown?
Here. I'm having a really hard time hearing you though, Amy. I'm sorry. I'm going to try to switch my audio up. It might be on my side.
Here. All right. We have a quorum. And before we start, I'd like to... Welcome Jennifer Henry. She is our... Hi there. Welcome. And also, Dr. McLean is here. Will McLean will be... Is he back there? I should really be thanking the gentleman that let me in today. Thank you. And he also said, can I help you? So, that sounds great. Thank you, everybody. With that, let's start with the COVID considerations, please.
Yes. So, we're going to do a couple of updates today for you. We want to make sure that as we're looking at our... Before we cut it when we got it, I was third to go to 100% considering. We said that we're going to continue to update not only new party packets, but also at the board meeting. So, Dr. Campbell and Wendy, Chief Academic Officer Wendy Pendergrass, are going to be talking about what the current data looks like for our COVID-19 cases within the county. We also have a little bit more information about what it looks like throughout the different districts throughout the county. And then, we are going to go into another presentation after that. And that is going to be provided by Dr. Grigsby, Mr. Anders, and Ms. Wisdom regarding what it would look like if the board were to look at how we would reveal them. So, we're going to give you some options through that. We have communicated this out to our staff, and we wanted to make sure that they were all informed and aware of that we were going to be having these discussions tonight. So, we've also been able to do some live streaming and some videos with our teachers in our SSD schools. They've given me and our leadership team direct feedback in terms of what they are feeling, like what do we need to do to help them return? But also to make sure that we are understanding some of their concerns. So, we want you all to know that we've been trying to communicate this and work with all of our staff and make sure that you guys are well informed about this process and that the staff is also feeling that they are part of the consideration in this. But we also know...
Know what we've been hearing from our families. Our families are saying, majority of them, how do we get our kids back into school? You know that our COVID cases are below the 5% right now. And so, we want to be able to present this to the board so all of you can make a decision if you want to tonight to be able to see if we're wanting to move in a direction of real... All right. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pendergrass and to Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Keenan. President Cunio, Vice President Brown, Board of Directors, and Dr. Keenan. I am Wendy Pendergrass, Chief Academic Officer. And as Dr. Keenan had said earlier, Dr. Campbell is on Zoom, and he will be able to answer some questions. We are going to talk a little bit this evening about the COVID considerations. So, as you remember, and as we reviewed when we first started producing this document, the mitigation factors that we had to talk about, of course, or consider was protecting people for increased severity illness. So, who are those people? Older adults, people with underlying medical conditions, per the CDC, children who have medical complexities. Emphasize, we need to think about personal responsibility, and we also need to tailor our strategies to help support the population of students and families that we have. So, again, the district would need to consider safety of children, safety of staff, safety of families, the consequence for our students and families of no in-person learning, and of course, the mitigation of the risk that that would involve. The next couple of slides is some graphs that I'd like to share with you. Positivity rates by district. So, if you look, there's a bar graph of just basically some of the districts that we partner with. If you notice, the asterisks actually indicate those that have live in-person learning happening. Give you a few minutes to look at that. And those districts, this data does include the information from all student groups. So, that is kind of local. When we look at St. Louis County, which is our next slide. I broke this down by age. So, rate of cases versus age of child. You have zero to four at 5.36%, five to nine at 3.8%, 10 to 14 age range, 4.53%. The 15 to 19 is when we start to see it really raise at 19.81%. And then, the 20 to 20-year... Sorry, 20 to 24-year-old population, 22.14%. So, that's cases in St. Louis County. We also looked on the next slide of Jefferson County. Some of the counties that put up against us, St. Louis County, you have the zero to four, 2.13%, five to nine, 4.70%, 10 to 14, 16.72%, a spike again with 15 to 19 at 44.60%, and then 25% for our 20 to 24-year-old population.
I'm confused on the percentages. Does that mean that nearly one out of every two individuals from 15 to 19 would have COVID?
That is what the data was showing.
I'm sorry. I do want to ask another clarification. Are these... Or are these percentages of positive cases?
Yeah.
From what I understand, it is a positive cases.
This seems outrageous.
Based on the number... Your baseline is the number that are tested. And then, so the percentages of those tested, how many are positive? And again, you know, you have to consider how the testing is being done. If you're testing almost exclusively symptomatic people, your rate of positivity is going to be higher.
Can you hear? Okay.
Can you off that line, please?
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Did everybody hear that?
Did everyone hear his answer?
I want to follow up on your question. What's your concern about the positivity rate? Where's the positivity rate?
I'm happy to describe that over to Dr. Campbell.
So, Dr. Asner, how does that differ from the positivity rate?
That is... It's not the positivity rate in the general population. And that's not a number that could be tracked. Well, so what we have, what they present is the number of cases. The closest thing to come to that is the number of cases per 100,000. But that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about the percentage of tests that are positive.
And why is it for individuals that were tested who had shown symptoms? Therefore, they were tested. That's how we got it.
People could be tested because they're showing symptoms or because they've been in contact. They've been in contact with somebody who was positive. I think we're kind of beyond the point of just testing for curiosity's sake. I think mostly it comes down to those two things, whether you have symptoms or whether you've been in contact with somebody who is known positive.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent.
We have another chart that talks about St. Charles County and school age with the zero to four, again, being somewhat lower at 4.22%. The five through nine age, 4.41%. 5.82% at 10 to 14. For our 15 to 19, it jumps again, 32.32%. And then, again, the 20 to 24 age range is at 42.54%. Next slide. So, I also wanted to share with you districts that are in some phase of reopening, of students being in person. That is some of the districts as of this meeting today or as of this presentation that are in some form of bringing students back for a live session. As you, I'm sure you are aware, that changes very rapidly and daily. But that is up to date as to what we have here. Next slide. So, key indicators to consider when we were looking at that, North County areas or lower and south. If you notice the grid where you started looking at some of the larger districts that are on the second and third page of what districts were opening. Districts across St. Louis County are, of course, in some process or some phase of reopening. The most lower positivity rates are ages five to nine and 10 to 14. And of course, the highest rates of transmission across the county is our age group of 15 to 19 when we're considering school age. Next slide. Of course, we collected the data from Education Plus and of course, from our CDC, both state and local health departments. And that is all for the data. Do you have any questions? Yes. Oh, wait. No, sorry. Yep, that's it. Questions?
I have another question about with the teenager age being so much higher. Is there any... Are all these schools requiring masks in school or some not? Or are we... If they are, are we assuming that these schools might be socially...
Of the schools that we know back in session, Chiquita McRiddle, our Executive Director, has their reopening plans on our website. And the majority of the plans for reopening, there is masking. They would like the kids to wear masks during... Yes, all of the time.
Actually, one of the schools has...
Yes. Yes. They try to mitigate a lot of those facts with blended learning, with having small group sizes, having passing areas in hallways that are one side of the hall or other. Right.
Another way to ask my question would be, Dr. Campbell, what are the theories why teenagers seem to have these higher rates than those younger school kids?
Well, I think in general, the thing we would consider is that they're not being very careful outside of the school setting. I mean, if you're able to get them to wear masks in school, then thumbs up. But outside of school, they're not being very careful. And the same thing would apply for the 20-somethings. That's not obviously of relevance to decisions about the school. But there, you know, whether it's that same adolescent invincibility or attitude or what, but I think that would probably be the primary reason why we're seeing a higher incidence. A higher... I should say a higher case incidence or a higher level of positivity. There was one thing in the very second to last slide that I thought was... I don't know. We can't necessarily need to go back to the slides. We just had to be really careful with our terms because when we're talking about that percentage, we're talking about the positivity rate, which has to do with the number of tests that are done that are actually positive. So, it was something about transmission in that last slide that I thought was higher level of transmission was confusing.
I...
Dr. Campbell, I find it uncomfortable about using that as a measure because the thing is, we're picking up individuals that either feel that they need to be tested. I'm not getting a true rate. If we can get a true rate of what COVID incidences in the area.
Could you... Wendy, could you repeat the question? When the audience is speaking, it's hard for me to hear it.
So, he was saying, what... Can you repeat it? What is the actual COVID rate? If we can get an actual rate number important. Incident?
My problem is that when I'm hearing the COVID rate, this is only the number of individuals that are tested.
Yes.
Is there a way to get the percentage of individuals in the area that have COVID based on their age groups?
Is there a way to get a rate or percentage of individuals with COVID in the area?
Well, I don't know about broken down by age bracket, but the data that's presented by the Education Plus folks, the category that gets closest to that is new cases per 100,000 or just raw new cases. But those numbers right now are pretty low. In fact, the one that Dr. Keenan forwarded to me this week, when you get down to talking about it per 100,000, it's basically zero because it's like a small percentage per 100,000. It's such a small overall number. All of these numbers, and I tried to present this when I presented the last thing, all of these numbers are just sort of... It's kind of like looking at shadows. I mean, you're not... There's no one thing you can reach out and get your hands around. I think that as I looked at the numbers from this week, everything is down considerably. I mean, when we were talking, for example, positivity rate. Positivity rate was up at and a little bit over 10 when we were talking about this a few weeks ago. And now, for like two weeks straight, it's been one fraction or another, either side of five, which is supposedly, you know, their cutoff. But again, even those cutoffs are just arbitrary. They're just best guess at, you know, at things to follow. There is no hard number to say, okay, well, when this happens, then we're, you know, then we're good. Or when this happens, we got to do something different. I think overall, the numbers are, you know, continue to trend in the right direction. And I think that's what we're seeing reflected in the fact that more and more districts are opening. They're all opening pretty consistently by starting out with the very youngest kids, K through two. Rockwood this week is going to, I think on Wednesday or Thursday, add in three, four, and five. And they have a date for when they would add in the next age group. And so far, we're not seeing anything terrible happen in these districts that are reopening.
I was struck by the Kirkwood positivity rate being somewhat higher than all the other schools. Is there any explanation or thoughts on that?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, you know, there was some talk about that even on the news, you know, within the last few weeks. I don't know how to explain that.
Okay.
Question is regarding, of course, my schools, which is a lot larger than most of those that are open. What seems to be some of the concerns that have been discussed, if we have, with the Hazelwood district in reference to their opening?
That we have discussed with Hazelwood?
Have we had any discussions in reference to their thoughts about opening at this point?
They are considering, per the... Per our liaison, they are considering every couple of weeks the data of when they would reopen. The last we heard was... The last we heard, I do believe, is two weeks. They're going to consider the data again in two weeks.
Is cost factor in any of these schools that are still not open at this point? Is there a cost factor in reference to being open in the public facility, such as, as I mentioned today, by deep cleaning? That's an additional cost. The testing for the kids, if you're in fact going to try to make sure as we come into the building here that you take temperatures. Those bring about additional costs. So, has there been any discussion in reference to that being a concern as to why maybe some...
I have not been involved in a meeting where the cost has been a factor on considering reopening.
Are any of those costs then a part of any of the granting money or the monies that's supposed to be made available by federal government? It's been passed down to state counties. Are those costs included in that?
For those particular districts, for the districts you represent?
Are schools able to access any of that money that in turn then offsets those costs?
I can check in for... I can check that for you in those districts.
Mr. Faulkner, in reference to Hazelwood School District, we did meet with them yesterday during our VA sign checking in. And they are continuing to monitor the positivity rate as well as the number of cases per COVID in the Hazelwood School District. Of course, we know that in North County, there are several pockets with large percentages of COVID cases. And they're continuing to review that information to make determination as to when they will make the decision to allow students to return to school.
I don't want to further complicate this discussion, but you know, in previous meetings, we've talked about, well, what kind of screening will be done and that sort of thing. One of the things that seems to be on the table is more rigorous testing. And putting aside, because I don't want to get ahead of the agenda, I don't know if this is being discussed or not, but putting aside anything that the Special School District may have specific access to. The Department of Education and Secondary Education, just this last week, put out some information about testing that they're able to make available for symptomatic staff and students. And I don't know to what degree SSD has talked... I talked about implementing or accepting that. You have to sort of sign on. You're going to be doing some paperwork associated with it. And your own staff would be the ones administering the testing. But it happens to be an antigen test with results that would be available in 15 minutes. And again, when you think about testing, it's not like you're going to test somebody and say, oh, it's negative back to class. Because if you're testing them, they're already sick. It's more a matter of, all right, well, it's negative. So, you know, if the fever goes down and you're feeling better in a couple of days, you can come back as opposed to, okay, it's positive. Now, you're, you know, you're quarantined for 10 days.
And several of us attended that Zoom that took place Friday. Was it Friday? Friday? I feel like it's Friday. And are currently working on procedures for what that looks like for Special School District. There's some paperwork that goes along with it. There are key points that they want us to, as a team, to look at. There are some application processes that we have to go do. So, we are currently working on that. And that is due to Dussey by the 21st of October. If there's no other questions, then thank you very much.
So, now we'll have the second presentation to discuss with the board and present some possible scenarios of what it would look like if we were to reopen our schools and what that process would look like in informing not only our staff but our families.
All right. So, good evening, President Cunio, Vice President Brown, Board of Directors, and Dr. Keenan. My name is Kevin Anders, Executive Director of Career Technical Education and College and Career Readiness. Presenting with me is Dr. Kelly Grigsby, Executive Director of Schools, who's joining us via Zoom. And then, Casey Wisdom, who is our Director of Transition Services in the Vocational Skills Program, will also be part of this presentation. VSP is one of those topics that we didn't spend a lot of time in the last board meeting talking about. So, I want to make sure that we address some questions and concerns going with that program tonight as well. So, quick overview of what we'll be discussing. So, we're doing an overview of the Vocational Skills Program. Then, from there, we're going to talk about staff reentry and logistics associated with reentry. Then, touch on family choices and logistics associated with family choice. And then, talk about the proposed reopening options for the SSD schools. So, talking about special education schools, technical skills schools, and VSP is what we'll be focusing on. So, next slide.
Board President Cunio, Vice President Brown, Board of Directors, Dr. Keenan. My name is Casey Wisdom. I'm the Director of Transition Services and the Vocational Skills Program for the district. So, we wanted to just spend a little bit of time giving you some information about the Vocational Skills Program as you make your considerations for reopening. As you may know, the Vocational Skills Program serves students who are between the ages of 18 and 21 years old. They have finished their traditional four years of high school, but their IEP teams have determined that they would benefit from continuing on to work on skills towards employment and employment goals. We are non-traditional in terms of where we are located. So, we are completely located out in the community in businesses with business partners. So, our classrooms are located in those businesses. And the students spend the majority of their day out in work-based learning experiences. So, they're working alongside employees in those businesses with the support of our teachers and our staff learning critical job skills. We have been on distance learning as the rest of the district has been. And so, we've been providing instruction in job skills, daily living skills, and social skills. It is difficult in a distance learning environment to replicate real-world work experiences. But our staff have been doing an amazing job. I believe you've been getting our engagement numbers. And so, we've been having really good engagement from our students throughout the distance learning process. We do have a total of 31 sites across St. Louis County currently. And these numbers could change by the end of tonight as this situation is ever evolving. But right now, we have 13 of our sites, of our 31 sites, who are willing to allow students back. Of those 13, four are located within SSD facilities. Closed to students right now are 18 of our sites. They're just not at a point where they're willing to bring students back. Students fall typically under the volunteer category. And most of our partners are not allowing volunteers into their businesses at this time.
Is there a type? I mean, we're talking closed students. I've seen ignoring the SSD facilities, which our control bias says. That gives me nine are willing and 18 are not. So, that's... Twice as many are not. Is there a type of site that will not allow our students? Or is it based on anything like that? Or is it just two thirds of the society?
Yeah. It's really sort of different across the board. We have some long-term care facilities that are allowing us back. Most are not. Some of our hospitals are allowing us back. Some are not. We partnership with Bear, Chesterfield and Creve Court. They're not bringing their own employees back yet. And so, it really just depends on the business. And it really depends even on... And so it really just depends on the business, and it really depends even on what the COVID situation is in that business at the given time. So we've had some sites who have said, yes, you can come back, and then have had some changes in their own COVID cases and have said, no, we're not going to be able to have you back at this time. We have, of our staff, 38 of our 74 will be displaced. We did start working back in March prior to closure to identify alternative sites for any of our sites that aren't willing to allow us back. So we will be utilizing the North Transportation Garage, the Central Garage, South Tech, North Tech, Central Office, and the Learning Center for alternate sites. Additionally, Merits and St. Luke's, who are two of our business partners, are allowing us to bring one additional site into their facilities because they feel like they have the space and capacity to do so. And we certainly appreciate that partnership.
So Ms. Wisdom, when you say students and staff displaced, you're saying that they participate in the ones that are not open?
Correct.
So they're not able to?
So they'll be reassigned to an alternate site.
Study network virtually with students, though?
Oh, yes, we're completely engaged in distance learning, but when there is a decision to return in person, those students will not be allowed to return to the sites that they are assigned to, and we will then be moving them to SSD facilities to provide their in-person learning. Okay? Logistical challenges just unique to VSP, we don't have a building that we can be in control of, so we are at the mercy of our community partners. And again, we're very grateful for them and understand that they have their own situations that they have to be very cognizant of. We're very, working very closely with them around what their own protocols and guidelines are to ensure that we can keep our staff and students safe within those businesses that are open to us. We need to be able to adjust quickly. Things could change on a dime in terms of what we are allowed to access, and so working closely with transportation, with food service, to ensure we have that ability to be flexible. And then we are concerned about our work opportunities. So even in those sites that we are returning to, we're not quite sure what work opportunities will be open to us, so we will need to be creative and probably find some new opportunities within those sites. And then also, when we look at our alternate sites and the number of students that we'll have placed in those sites, it is going to be challenging, and we'll need to be creative to find work opportunities for students in those alternate sites. Is there any questions I can answer?
You made a question. So you're just thinking, you have to be creative, trying to, how close are we to be able to put those hundreds of kids into the DUSI garages, North Tech, everything?
So, we are there, absolutely, yeah. So we have identified spaces, in fact, we were touring spaces again today to make sure things are getting ready to go for students. So that's already in place and implemented, we'll be ready to go as soon as a return-in-person decision is made. So that we've been ready for, for quite some time. Okay?
I have another question there. Kids who are potentially aging out at this point, is there going to be any consideration for them and for any opportunities to date this out?
Yes, we will be looking at, it is, it is a little bit difficult in terms of looking at what sites are open and where the work opportunities might be, and who we may need to shift around to provide those opportunities to. We have discussed that. It does get a little complicated when, then you're talking about movement of a lot of students, onboarding processes at different businesses, those sorts of things. But we'll be looking at that and considering that as well. We've also been working with our adult agency partners to determine if there's something that is more appropriate for them at this point with an adult agency partner as well. Any other questions? Hey, I think it's back to Kevin.
All right. So if you remember at the last board meeting, we talked a little bit about timetable of, if we were to reopen our schools, the first step would be that we need to bring our staff back into our buildings, that that really would be step one. And that if we were going to bring our staff back, we would need to give them at least two weeks' notice, so giving them some lead time to give them time to prepare to return back to the classroom. So talking about staff reentry, our recommendation is that all staff in SSD schools, sites, and programs return in order to prepare for students. So we would notify staff tomorrow, which would be October 14th, that staff have provided written notice of a return date, and our recommended return date would be October 28th. So that'd be for all staff at SSD schools and programs, so that's Ackerman, Bridges, Litzinger, New Owner, Northview, Southview, South Tech, North Tech, and VSP. So all of those sites and buildings, we'd be looking at a, providing notice on October 14th, and then having staff report in person for the first time on October 28th to give them time to prepare, no matter what option is considered, is to prepare for the return of students to in-person learning. As far as communication with staff, we want to have them begin preparing schools and classrooms for staff to return, so when our staff do come back, right now, our principals are getting our buildings ready and getting all those pieces in place, so that when staff report, staff are then ready to make sure they're getting their classrooms in order if they haven't done so already. And supporting our staff, so we want to provide them notice to return in person. We want to prepare for staff coverage due to leaves, as well as accommodation requests that may be received, so that's also the part where we need that two-week window, so notify on the 14th, that gives us to the 28th to address any issues that might arise between now and the 28th, as well as allow us to hire for any vacant positions. Specifically, there are a number of para-vacancies in the SSD schools that we'd be looking to, potentially to fill, depending on what family interest is. And then also finalizing, finalizing our protocols for the various scenarios that we might encounter. Our staff contact tracing procedure is already in place, Human Resources has been doing a great job with that for months now, but they've been going through the contact tracing procedure. We've now also got a student contact tracing procedure that we're in the process of finalizing. We really looked at what other districts are doing for student contact tracing, specifically those in Missouri that are in session, and really modeled our process based off of that. And so that's a piece that we have to have finalized before students can come in, in person learning.
Good evening. All right. And executive director for schools and programs, thank you for letting me join you remotely, I appreciate it. With regards to logistics for families, in addition to logistics for staff, what we need to make sure we're doing is updating and sharing our reopening plans with families. We need to survey families for their choice and how they would like to receive instruction, whether that be virtual, continue virtually or in person. We need to update families on our reentry plans and also our PPE procedures, and talk with families about pickup and drop-off procedures as those may change, secure transportation, create schedules, and then, you know, really just focusing on keeping all of our students and staff safe. So within our family choice survey, and I believe we talked about this at one of our last meetings, we have two options, well, we actually have three options. Our plan is to deploy a family choice survey beginning tomorrow. It's a link where families can make a decision. The three options are in-person instruction, where they would choose to participate in our phased reopening. So if the board chooses to move with a phased reopening, they would start with hybrid, then we would move into a five-day in-person instruction. They would be making a selection for the remainder of the school year, we would revisit if we needed to. The second choice would be 100% virtual, which means they would continue to receive their instruction and related services in the model we're using currently. And then the third option is virtual with related services in person. So we would create a schedule for students who would select to receive most of their instruction virtually, but would like to participate in maybe occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language therapy in person. Again, we're talking about deploying that survey, it's ready to go, based on the board's decision tonight, on October 14th, with the survey closing on October 19th, to provide us with an additional time to make sure that we can provide scheduling that allows us to ensure students are receiving everything they need educationally. Next slide. So currently, all of our schools and programs are in 100% distance learning model. Next slide. As we're considering reopening, the options that I will be providing tonight specifically are geared towards our SSD, our separate schools, and our Vocational Skills Program. Currently, we're in phase one, our current phase is 100% distance learning. Phase two would be family choice, which are the options I went over, in addition to a hybrid, two days a week in person, with the rest of the week remaining remote. Or a phase two would be five days a week in-person instruction, or continuing with family choice with 100% distance learning. And then phase three would be a phase out of distance learning completely and a return to five days a week of in-person instruction. Next slide. So as you can see, we've given you a grid with some options on it. These are the options that we're proposing for reopening for SSD, separate schools, and our Vocational Skills Program. We've given it, we've set up this in two different ways, giving you four options, A, B, C, and D, and we've set them up in a way that we are addressing K8 because of the differences in the data, and then high school and VSP because our VSP program also serves primarily high school-age students. We've given you some different options. Option A would provide a return to phase one, which is the two days a week of in-person learning for elementary on November 9th, with a move to phase two, which is five days a week of in-person learning, paired with family choice on January 4th. Option A for high schools would provide a return with in-person learning on November 9th, and then a return to phase two, which would be five days a week of in-person learning paired with family choice on January 19th. The difference in dates there is one for elementary, the semester break isn't as big of an issue, so we would look at winter break being a natural transition time, whereas the semester, the second semester starts on January 19th, which is more of an issue for our students who are credit earning. Option B, option A, B, and C for elementary are the same, they have the same dates, November 9th for a start for phase one, and January 4th for a start back for phase two. Where we have some differentiation is in our high school and VSP options. So option B would allow for a little bit later start date for phase one to account for that higher positivity rate, and our older students with a transition back to phase two on January 19th. And option C would say, we're going to stay in-person learning for now with a goal to move into phase one after, at the start of the second semester. And then option D would be to continue accessing distance learning at all of our sites and schools. Next slide.
All right, so that moves us into the technical high schools, and so I'm going to give you a quick overview as a reminder. In the technical high schools, in our phased reentry plan, currently, we're doing 100% virtual instruction. Phase one is a hybrid delivery model with family choice, where there's the option of a virtual, 100% virtual option, or one day a week in person. Phase two is a two-day-a-week in-person, or the option of 100% virtual. And then phase three would be five days a week in person. There is an asterisk on phase three of keeping in mind that there is not a virtual option as a part of phase three, as we talked about at the last board meeting in career and technical education, one of those challenges that's unique to us is most of our programs, there's only one instructor for that program. So the idea that we could divide students between a virtual teacher and an in-person teacher, we don't have that option. Even in the listening sessions we had last week with our teachers, that was one of the things we did hear loud and clear from our CTE teachers, is they were really concerned about the ability to support virtual students at the same time as trying to support students in person. Being able to safely supervise students in a shop setting while you're trying to support virtual learners at the same time, it's just not possible to balance those two. And we don't want to put any student safety in jeopardy, and so that was really one of the big concerns that we heard back from our staff, was trying to do five days a week in person and five days a week virtual is a significant challenge in CTE. Do you want to go to the next slide?
I'm sorry, I guess I'm confused about, when you use the word options for before and now, where do I see options on the other pages? I see phases, I see other words, but I don't see options. What's the difference between option A and B, for example, in the special education schools and VSP, A, B, and C?
So A, if you look at the special education schools, the difference between A, B, and C, the elementaries are all the same, but the high school, there are different date ranges there. So if you look on the high school and VSP for phase one, option A, that would begin on November 9th, whereas option B, that'd begin on November 30th?
No, I'm saying if you were in elementary, phase one hybrid, what's the difference between option A, phase one hybrid, option B, phase one hybrid, option C, phase one hybrid? No difference.
So there's no difference for the elementary. So what's being proposed for elementary K through eight is a November 9th return option or a continued distance learning?
So the only difference on that whole page is dates for the high school, right?
That's correct.
Is there any information, any reliable information that allows us to determine is there a greater rate of getting sick with COVID going one day a week as opposed to five days a week?
And so if you look at the phase model that we're presenting for career and technical education, it's really being rooted back in really two things. So one is our ability to effectively deliver instruction. And so if we're talking about effective instructional delivery, and we're trying to stick with the distance learning plan we're doing currently, where students are getting three live sessions per week, we're able to continue to support that if we have students in person two days a week. So one group of students would be in one day, another group of students would be in the other day, so the teacher would be able to still give live instruction three days a week to the students who choose virtual. So that's why that's our phase one. And our phase two, where you have students coming in two days a week in person, so either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, it allows us to keep that cohort smaller. As we talked about in the last board meeting, one of the challenges that's unique to career and technical education, our ability to social distance students during certain activities, in some cases just isn't possible, because we do have limited numbers of pieces of equipment and supplies, where when you're doing demonstrations, you do have to have students in a tighter area. So by breaking up the cohort, if you did have to quarantine students, you'd be quarantining a smaller group of students as opposed to potentially quarantining an entire classroom. But as far as, is there empirical evidence that says a cohort model keeps students safer? It's kind of a mixed bag, because the challenge is when the students are not in person, so Harvard did a study where they talked about how the challenge is, they're really safe those two days a week they're in person, but those other three days a week that they're not in person, you don't have control over who they're interacting with. So a student might be interacting with far more people than they would if they were coming to school. Where if they're coming to school, you know exactly who that student was interacting with on a day-to-day basis, more so than you would know if they're out in a general public population.
So they may be safer medically going to school?
Potentially. Especially if you're talking about in those lower grades where those cohorts are very small, the high school setting's a little bit different, because you are going to have class changes, and so students would potentially be interacting with a larger population. But in elementary, where those classes are smaller and it's a tighter cohort, they're potentially safer in person. At least that's what the Harvard study stressed. So if we can go back to the options for the technical high schools, so there are four different options on the screen, so A, B, C, and D. There is some difference between each one of these. So option A calls for us returning in person on November 30th in phase one. We would then move into phase two, two weeks later on December 14th, in preparation for a return to phase three, which would be five days a week in person on January 19th. Keep in mind that if we did that, that would mean that we wouldn't have a virtual option in January. We did have, when we surveyed two weeks ago, a high number of students and families, especially in the north region, who expressed interest in a virtual option. So there is concern that if we do not offer a virtual option, those students and families may withdraw from North Tech or South Tech if we don't offer a virtual option. In the north region, we had about 28% of our families indicate that if they had to pick, they would pick virtual. So there is some concern that if we don't offer a virtual option, those are students who then would no longer be accessing career and technical education at North Tech. Option B, again, is a November 30th return to in-person instruction in phase one, one day a week. Then we would shift to phase two, which would be two days a week, and that would be January 19th. And then, as far as a phase three date, it says to be determined or 21, 22 school year. Because one challenge is, if we move from phase two to phase three, where we take away the virtual option, for any student who wants virtual, they would have to go back to their sending school to get those virtual classes. Depending on when you make that switch, it could be easier or challenging. If you switch in February, it might be possible for students to go back to their sending high school, but if you make that decision in April, when they're almost through the semester, it would be very hard for a student to then flow back to their sending high school and still be able to earn credit for the semester. And because everything we're doing is credit-bearing at the high school level, that really adds some nuance to the situation. Option C calls for a January 19th begin of phase one, which is the first day of second semester. So that would be us starting on the first day of second semester in phase one. We would then move into phase two, when it's determined that it's safe to move into phase two. We'd probably want to stay in phase one for at least two to three weeks to get routines established before moving into phase two. So probably a February move to phase two, and then again, same issues as above with option B, to be determined of when you could move into phase three. Option D is continuing with distance learning at all SSD schools and sites. So that is another option where you could remain virtual, and we continue to evaluate the data and determine, do we move to in-person at a later date? One asterisk that's down there at the bottom mentions supplemental transportation. So this is another unique piece that we have in career and technical education, because 68% of the students that we serve are half-day, which means that they do, they're academics at their home high school, and they're coming to us specifically for career and technical education. Our mid-day transportation involves either picking students up from the high school or dropping them back off at their home high school. If their high school is not in session, then we don't necessarily have the ability to pick them up from their high school or drop them off at their high school. In conversations with some of our sending schools, they're very uncomfortable while their buildings are closed, having us use their buildings as drop-off and pickup sites, which makes sense. I don't think I'd want to have I don't think I'd want to have sixty high school students dropped off in my parking lot with nobody there to supervise them. So it'll be fine most days, but then some days it might not be great. So there's some concern there. And so if we can't pick up and drop off from the high school, we'd have to find some alternative places to pick students up. One thing that we've talked about is potentially using metro bus stops as a place to pick students up from. And that way we could provide students with metro passes to get to those places to be able to pick them up. But we do know historically, when our sending schools aren't in session, we really struggle with getting students to the technical programs. Because if the student lives, let's take a large geographic district, let's take like in Rockwood. Lafayette covers a very large service area. You could live six, seven, eight miles from the high school. If you're a sixteen-year-old without a car, eight miles to the high school, there's really no way for you to get there. And our families struggle with providing transportation during the midday. It's one thing to drop a student off in the morning on your way into work or pick them up at the end of the workday. It's very different to say, we need to get the student in the parking lot at the high school at eleven fifteen AM. That's just a different burden on families, which is also why option C is on the table beginning in semester two, because we still are, our sending schools are still deciding what they're going to do as far as when they come back in person. So at this point, as Wendy had in that earlier slide in her presentation, most of our sending schools have not reopened high schools yet. As more high schools reopen, that midday transportation will become easier for us. But right now we will have some wrinkles with the midday transportation piece.
Is there any advantage of starting the tech schools at the beginning of a new semester?
Yeah, so there is an advantage there too. Right now, many of our partner districts are running what I would call unique bell schedules. Some of our schools switched over to a four-by-four block schedule, which means first quarter, they do four classes. Second quarter, they do four different classes, as opposed to where they normally do eight classes back-to-back or seven classes back-to-back. And so that is impacting their ability to fit tech in. Where right now, when we're virtual, it's easy for you to hop over from a Zoom and then hop to a Zoom somewhere else. It's much harder to then travel the distance that they would need to travel to get to us to be on time for class. So we would have some fewer logistical challenges. The other piece is by starting at the semester, if a student doesn't want to come back to the technical high school, it's a very clean breaking point for a student to return back to their sending school because it's a start of a new semester.
Okay. In the, with the whole transportation problem, is it possible that, or can you just send the other half of the day in every classroom on Zoom with their home school? And so is it a full day within one building?
So that's absolutely something that we've talked about of trying to see that as an option. The one challenge is because our technical schools are each absor, each of them are absorbing about six VSP sites. What would have been open classrooms are now becoming classrooms for the vocational skills program. So the only spaces that we really have available are things like the gymnasium. Concern about trying to have a hundred students zooming all at the same time in the gym, that. And then there's also the supervision piece of having staff available to supervise. But many of what would have been open classroom spaces right now are going to be occupied by VSP.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Please, your recommended open for that tech school.
That's a really good question. And I've been going back and forth on it because on the one hand, I would like students to be able to return to in-person as soon as possible because there really are some things that we can do in person that it's just challenging to do virtually. But at the same time, looking at those logistical challenges, I don't want to see a student who tries to access us, but it's so cumbersome because that transportation piece just can't sync up for them. That for me, the most natural, I believe, would be option C where we begin at the start of a new semester. And that way, if a student wants to exit, it's a very clean point for them to return back to the sending school. And by that point, the hope is that most of our partner districts come January, will have high school back in session, so that midday transportation piece should work for the majority of the students that we serve.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Kelly Bris, Dr. Brisby, thank you, the same question about what your recommended option is for the.
Absolutely, so my recommendation would be that we open the elementary schools on November ninth, as discussed in the first three options. Move to phase two on January fourth at the, after the winter break. I am a little bit torn with regards to high schools. I would like to see students back in schools, but I'm also very concerned about the positivity rates in our fifteen- to nineteen-year-olds. Will the delay in that start support that? I'm not positive. I mean, I don't know where the date is going to be in, in, in the middle of November. But I would say option B provides us for a little bit more time to get a better gauge on that positivity rate. But I would say that option A, option A is also doable.
With option B, Dr. Brisby, how much time are they really in school before break though? They go back to November thirtieth, they're only in three, three weeks?
Yeah, about, about three weeks. The cleanest transition would be, and the safest would probably be what Kevin has talked about for high school and VSP, would be a start, a start at the end of the first semester or the beginning of the second semester. Especially given the fact that it's only a three-week delay in start time between the ninth and the thirtieth. And then they were only for about three weeks.
Yes, you're saying January nineteenth showing?
For high schools, Ja, January nineteenth may be the best with regards to the higher positivity rates of the, for fifteen to nineteen-year-olds. I just, what I don't know is if those rates are going to decrease, given the fact that they seem to be the hardest for us to, to keep in the house.
At the same time, I, I still have problems with how they're determining positivity rates. To me, that, that just isn't a good number. I mean, the way they're doing it, I mean, I'm not telling you that it's not a positivity rate, but what I'm seeing is you're testing people that you think have difficulty. And if they do have difficulties, then they're positive. They didn't, they didn't, but man, when I looked at the numbers, Hazelwood was in a six percent era where Kirkwood was in the thirteen percent. That seems to fly in the face of everything else we know.
There's, there's, so there's issues like the deniability. How many tests are being admitted? Who, who has, you know, capability to get tested? To whom is it available? Just, it's going to be. Oh, with that actually.
It seems like you're, you're, you're comparing apples and oranges. I don't see how you're comparing appropriate measures to come up with a decision.
I can absolutely see where you're coming from, Dr. Clunio, for sure. What we do know is that regardless of how severe the data differences are, we do know that they are contracting it at a higher rate, even if we're not positive that it's as high of a rate as, as we think the data may say. The other issue is the rates in, in South County may look higher in some cases than they are in North County. We also have families that, due to socioeconomics, we have many, many, many families living in much small, family members maybe living in a smaller face. We also have to look at mortality rates as well in those areas.
And I, God forbid that I'm sounding cynical. The, I'm glad I haven't asked someone I say this. The, but I, I have, I saw in the Metro East when all of a sudden they were worried about having people open and close and they had to get their positivity rates lower. So what they recommended was people that were negative to get tested to drop the overall rate of positivity.
So, so, so this, this speaks to your question four about the actual number of people getting tested positive. And that's on page nine of that education plus tax of the E S. And if you go to that page, you see a, a day-by-day breakdown by counting of how many people are testing positive per one hundred thousand.
Okay.
And so you see that it's something like seventeen point five two per one hundred thousand.
So that's.
It's tremendously.
I guess the question though that I would have for you gentlemen is, is what would we do differently for those high school students as a result of this data? You know, if, if we're taking the same precautions for high school students as we would for middle school and elementary, you know, what's preventing us from doing the right thing at school, even if the activities outside of school are, you know, putting them at risk? I guess I just, I have, I have questions and I'm torn myself about, you know, what is the right thing for us to do as, as responsible school board members versus, you know, what do we expect these students to be doing to take care of themselves outside of school? And should that prevent them from getting an optimal education?
Yeah, I mean, that's the problem. Our mandate is to use data and we don't have enough data. This is the real challenge for us here. See, Julie, I go right in.
My, my, my hesitation is just that if we know we are putting more high school students at risk by having them in an in-person environment because the rates are higher among that age group, is that, you know, a reason to keep everybody out of school? Does that make sense? I would just, I'd love to hear kind of the, the others' interpretation of the data.
So my mind, the absolute numbers of test cases are very low. And this is not to in any way dismiss how serious of a problem this is, but the absolute numbers are low. And so when we're looking at those positivity rates, that, that is trying to give us a sense of, you know, of the tests that were done, what percentage of kids have tested positive were a certain age. But, you know, seventeen per one hundred thousand. And now this is a made-up number, I don't know if this applies, but let's say five of them were teenagers. That's five for a hundred thousand that were teenagers. That's a, that's a very low number. So again, this is my reading of the data. And I weigh this against the real challenges that families are facing because their kids are not in school right now.
See, Dr. Asner, my other, what I would like to know is are you at a greater risk if you go to school than if you stay home and you're virtual? That seems to me, I don't have the data to answer that, but that seems to me a real important question. Are you safer going to school where you have a, a pretty much structured environment? Are you safer not going to school? And I guess that would depend if you stayed at home, you did everything else, you completely sequestered. But I can't see that age group doing that.
There's, there's infinite permutations to, yeah, right? I mean, that's the problem with all this, right? Right, you know, e- even if the kids themselves are not at risk, are their families at risk? What's the risk for them of staying at home?
I agree. Because I, I don't believe these kids are going to be in any different situation when they leave the building, you know, the school building than they are right now. You know, they're going to continue to socialize out of, outside of school whether they, they like it or not. In, in school, we would be managing the risks and, and having health requirements. Because, I mean, ironically, the Kirkwood rates don't surprise me because I have kids in, in, in groups walking past my house every single day with no masks. I mean, huge groups of kids because we live in a walking community. So there's, there's, you know, it's not shocking unfortunately to me. But those kids at least would, would have the safety precautions in the school that, you know, we could manage the rates hopefully even better than it can be managed at home.
You know, and another thing that comes to my mind in reference to compounding this situation is just last week, we were suggested that everybody take flu shots because the flu area is going to be said to be even worse than it has been in the past. How many of these particular kids that might find themselves with the flu? And they still stay out or they find themselves being tested for COVID? I know we're talking COVID, but we do have a situation where now they're saying everybody needs to take a flu shot. That tells me that, that tends to compound the situation in reference to the possibilities of how kids are going to get tested for what, of what reasons kids will have not to actually be in school. Now, and so I don't see this being something that, it, it, it's no way that we can come up with a decisive answer as to how this is going to unfold in reference to the timeframe that's forgiven. You know, it's a shot in the dark. Beginning of this, it was said that schools open probably would be closed within a two, three week period of time ago. I still get the same thing happening, that within two weeks of opening, they be closed again based upon whatever.
I'd like to speak to some of that with some of our schools that have reopened. They are not closing most schools. They are looking at monitoring the student contact tracing. So they're managing classroom by classroom and they're also managing the contact tracing with the staff. We have staff at our SSD schools currently in our partner districts that are attending and their students are going there. And so we monitor that daily, we work with those partner districts, but they're not closing down their schools. They are closing down, if a classroom needs to be closed down, they go to our virtual. But they're really wanting to make sure they're managing the PPE, making sure that students are wearing masks, making sure the adults are wearing masks. They're not seeing the transmission rates with the student to student. Where they're seeing it is that if a staff member comes to school and they have some symptoms and then they're in a classroom without their mask, that's where you start to see the staff to staff concern. So that's where districts have said they don't have their, their staff lounges open anymore because they don't want to have the teacher, the adults to adults. Now, our schools and the SSD schools are different because they, we have a lot of adults in our classrooms to help support our students. We still will need to do the virtual portion of it, so we'll have that. The reason we're recommending a hybrid is not only bring staff back, but get the students back to start to practice. What does this look like? We can monitor those pieces. We can make sure that there's the PPE, people get used to it. So when I talk to the staff, Dr. Brisby has been doing a Let's Talk 2.0 with our staff in the SSD schools and, and Mr. Andert, staff are anxious, but they're also saying that in terms of where they're at currently, the majority of them are wanting to be able to do it in a safe manner. We do have staff that have concerns, that is, our legitimate concerns, and we want to make sure that we work through the natural process with that. And then we're also providing through the family choice process that parents that don't feel that they want to participate in it, that they can keep their student home virtually and that we still are providing some option for our students to attend in person. And so we're trying to balance out all these pieces with the safeties, with the students, with the staff, of giving families where they're at because so many things are playing into this where we can't predict. But what I've, what I've heard the most from superintendents that have reopened is that once students get back in, staff start to feel a little bit more comfortable. Staff are working extremely hard with the virtual. It's really hard to connect with students, they're providing a lot of lessons. It's not easy. So bringing staff back in, getting them used to being in the classroom, working through it. Social distancing will, between the students will be different between the students and the staff, but the staff will have to be more social distanced and wearing their masks. So that's why we wanted to provide different options. We were, you know, with the K eight starting to go through November ninth and then January fourth, high school, we could look at it either the November ninth and then have five days in January nineteenth, or we could wait a little bit longer to do the November thirtieth to January nineteenth. And I'm not talking about that tech school, I'm just talking about the SSD special education school. Those are the things that we could think about in terms of that, but that was the rationale. And like Mr. Andert said about hybrid versus, is hybrids safer than five days a week? And Harvard studies did not distinguish it as any difference. The difference was it's more of a safety procedure to get staff and students used to it and then move them into the five days. That's what they told us.
Thanks.
I just, I want to speak to Mr. Faulkman, I think that was a really good point actually. About this cold and cough, cold flu season goes up, people are going to have more, more people that are tested. I mean, the positivity rates go down, even if COVID rates are going up. And that's why I think we should look at things like the absolute number.
I, I think positivity rate is a word with number.
That's a weekly amount, that number would probably be a better, no. Give us a better sense than, than a, like a seven-day average as opposed to.
Right.
And that are not, which again is a, is a bit superficial, but that's the other number I think we should be looking at. Not the positive.
Right. And, you know, the other interesting thing about the other districts, there have been districts in the state like Troy and, you know, Jefferson County, there's been schools that have been in, that have attended since the beginning of the school year. Some of them mandates masks on those. But they've had shown, like in particular, in touch with superintendent in the outer state, they did not, they had four thousand students, but they've only seen two positivity cases within their students. And that was when the students received that because they came in contact with a family member at home without masks. So they're starting to see that there's, there's, they communicate that the students are being exposed when they're not wearing the mask, but where in the schools, they have not seen a case where there has been a transmission within the school system. It's more what. It's more what you get outside of it, and it's nine times out of ten, they're saying those cases are coming out because people were exposed without wearing masks in a situation. So there, there are, they are saying that there's not going to be cases where that happens. But what we're trying to make sure is that we're providing the necessary PPE, the multiple layers for our staff, not only the masks, but the N ninety-five mask for some of our staff that require it for their certain situations. We also are looking at, you know, the shields. We also have, you know, certain pieces so that it's, what's the equipment for students to get Plexiglas? So we've got multiple options for each of our classrooms. We've already tried many of these options within our partner districts, and we have, you know, you know, there are, there are still, it's not saying that people haven't had the quarantine, but it's not, it's because what we have seen is where staff and students aren't, and, you know, there's not that transmission within the school system.
Well, and I can appreciate that, Dr. Keenan, I also mentioned about schools that were open. What have we heard then? Again, I go back to the question, to the schools that are not open. What seems to be the logistics that they'll face? I'm not saying that we shouldn't try. I'm just saying that it seems that, and again, I have to always think about my district, eighteen thousand students, the logistics that maybe Jennings can, can act, could be a nightmare.
Jennings is open.
I said, the logistics that Jennings can handle and pull together for them to be open could be a nightmare for larger school districts like Hazelwood. Because of the sheer volume of people involved, students, teachers, everything. And so, you know, I, I'm interested in knowing how did we, what kinds of things have we heard from those schools that are not open?
Well, we're talking about SSD schools, so we're talking about
But we're talking about partnering.
No, we're talking about our schools if we're going to reopen. We're not voting to say what S Hazelwood is going to do. We're talking about our, our five SSD special education programs and schools, and we're also talking about our tech schools. So we're not talking about Hazelwood schools and students that attend Hazelwood.
But we're talking about other district, school district that we're still partnering with, right? We provide no terms, nothing.
That, that's not the conversation.
None of that at all?
No. No, we're, we're just talking about what we're going to do with our schools. With the, with the partner schools, we are following their procedures. If they are open, we're, you know, we're, we are providing services there. If they're virtual, we are providing virtual services there.
Yeah.
Well, what we're looking at right here are, are our schools and the tech schools, and I would add bridges, of course. And, and by extension, funding, that's it.
I'd like to advocate that we look at option A for the special ed school and option C for the
Yeah, I agree because I don't hear any benefit of what's going between November ninth and January nineteenth. I don't hear of any benefit from doing that.
We have more time to find out what's really happening. I just, I, my, I'm speaking for myself here, I, I'm gonna, I guess, paraphrase what I see.
I think the one thing about the tech schools is that transportation. And, and we, our model is difficult because we can't just pick kids up at the school. Yes, we can try to do hubs, but it's still going to be challenging for those students.
Okay, what I would like to do, I think we need to vote on, on, on the motions. And this, and what I would ask for is we have option A. And we'll first start with special education schools and DSP. So what I would like somebody to do is
I'd like to make a motion to choose option for the special ed schools.
Elementary high school.
For a special education at DSP. Okay, option A, if there's a motion, would someone like to second that?
Second.
All right, all in favor, pardon me, I need that roll call on this, please.
Director Asner?
Yes.
Director Faulkner?
Mm-hmm.
Director Goodman?
Yes.
Director Patra?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Yes. This will also mean that our staff will be notified then, this will be done so that they can get all of their materials in.
We will notify, we will be sending a letter out to the staff tomorrow.
All right. Now, for the reopening options for SSD, we have option A, for technical high schools. And we have option A, B, C, and T. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve reopening the technical high schools according to option C.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Let's have a vote, please.
Director, Director Asner?
Yes.
Director Faulkner?
Yes.
Director Goodman?
Yes.
Director Patra?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
No.
President Cunio?
Yes. All righty. Next on our agenda, motion pay off system is the, yeah. CISA for universal service.
We're going to have to close out of this meeting and go to the
Yes.
Let's have a motion to hold the closed meeting.
Yeah, we have to, someone make a motion to hold closed meeting on the board?
Go ahead.
Second.
Need a roll call on this one also.
Director, Director Asner?
Yes.
Director Faulkner?
Yes.
Director Goodman?
Yes.
Director Patra? Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Cunio?
Yes. Now we go into the work session. We need to exit this and go to
I don't think we need, do we need to?
No, we don't.
Okay, we do need to adjourn. Someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Need a roll call on adjournment in this one. No, I don't. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. If everyone would like to take three minutes.
No, we'll back the
Then we will start there. Thank you. Okay, I'm muted. Yeah, I mean, it's, but I don't know.
I think she wanted to I thank you guys for the conversation.
Is it? Supposed to be cool tomorrow, no, nice tomorrow and then real cool. Real cool on Thursday. Why wouldn't that be cold?
She says, no, it would have, it would have been my first choice on finding. That was a special meeting.
No.
No, it was a special open meeting.
But I feared that because it was voting on these issues, that's why we had roll call throughout because I thought people wouldn't want to know that.
And then the special meeting at the end of it, it's, yeah, it's closed for, like, I got some staff that want to and yeah, I know. I did, I texted her, I said, there was a saying. So after watching, we, we were looking for like twenty minutes to find it, and then
Went out to the car, of course. We should probably re-reference that.
Well, he He's filing, he's like, well, we all looked, and then we couldn't find it. And then we finally, we finally found it, so I didn't want to, but I, I told her, I said, there was a saying, she she probably used training, she was she called, right?
We have a Four, eight, thirty, vote.
Hopefully, we'll see if we can do that, all right? This is an open meeting, yeah.
Start with the summer sports.
No.
Okay, hopefully. All right. Yeah, do we, uh, we need a, we have three presentations, we still need a roll call, I guess.
This is the work session.
It's a work study. All righty, place to begin then.
All right, thank you, everybody. We have three meetings updates for you. The first one is going to be our CISA goal three. This has been a series, we updated the board on CISA goal one, two, now we're going to do three and four. So we'll finalize that, you guys will get an update on that, and then we'll bring it back in the spring of the year once we're finalizing all of the goals. So we have two people who are the leads on the CISA goal three, which will be Mr. Andert again, and then Ms. Christine Finger, she is the director of communications.
All right, good evening again. So, work study. So, good evening, Vice President Brown, President Cunio, Dr. Keenan, members of the board. My name is Kevin Andert, Executive Director of Career and Technical Education and College and Career Readiness. And so Christine Finger and I are going to give a rundown of really everything that's happening within goal area three, which is engagement. Go to the next slide. So goal three engagement is promote, facilitate, and enhance engagement with key internal and external stakeholders to meet the needs of all students. And so really, the big pieces in here is making sure that we're taking stakeholder feedback and using it to ensure we're meeting the needs of all students. And so even though engagement can be very broad, this still is a very student-centered goal. There are two strategies within goal area three, so strategy three point one and three point two. So first, we'll talk about strategy three point one. So I am the strategy champion for three point one, which is develop, improve, and sustain collaborative relationships with industries, businesses, and agencies to expand future opportunities for students. And so this is a carryover of what was CISA goal one point seven, but there's been some adjustment in this from the wording that was in one point seven to now that it's moved into three engagement. Some really key words in this that our strategy is focusing on is sustain collaborative relationships. The district already has a lot of collaborative relationships with businesses, industry partners, agencies, community groups. But the key is making sure that we sustain, sustain those highly effective relationships. The other piece that we're focusing on is expanding those opportunities for students. So making sure we're taking that partnership or collaborative relationship and leveraging it to the fullest extent so we're having the broadest impact on the students that we serve. If we have a really great partnership or a relationship that's benefiting students in the DSP program, there's no reason why we can't take that relationship and potentially leverage it to support students in our SSD schools, or support students in our partner districts, or support students in our technical high schools. So really taking a holistic look at each of those different collaborative relationships that we have across the district, and making sure we're gaining the most mileage out of each one of those relationships. So you go to the next slide. So since we're talking holistically about all of the different relationships in the district, we have a very broad team that's doing work in this area. So we've got representation from the adult education group, we've got career and technical education, communications, the compliance Education, Communications, the Compliance Group, because many of these relationships include either a contract or an MOU or some form of an agreement, so making sure that we're meeting all of our needs there from a compliance standpoint. PETA, which is our Parent Education and Diversity Awareness Group, directors from our partner districts, our Purchasing Department, SSD schools, and the Vocational Skills Program. So really trying to make sure that we're representing all of the different functional areas within the district. Next slide. Alright, so as I mentioned, this is a carryover from 1.7 with a little bit of an adjustment. Um, some of the outcomes back when this was under 1.7 that were accomplishments, first was the adoption of a program called Seamless Work-Based Learning Software, um, which we began using initially in the Career and Technical Education side as a way to begin cataloging all of the collaborative relationships that we have that we're working with. So tracking those business and industry partners, who are they? What does that relationship look like? And what's the impact that that's having on students? So that software is on, and start to categorize those partners and then track where all are they interacting with students and programs. Because many of those relationships cut across multiple programs and multiple areas, and for those that don't, looking at are there ways where we can make some logical connections to other areas in the district? We also expanded formative feedback from our families, so in the IEP survey, we added some questions, we added actually four questions, really focusing on are families aware of the opportunities that exist throughout the district? And then are they satisfied with the opportunities that we're offering specifically partnerships with agencies, businesses, and industry? So we're trying to get that feedback annually of are we hitting the mark? And not only are we hitting the mark, we can now drill down to specific pockets within the district to see where there might be more need in one area over another area in the district. We might have a lot of really good collaborative relationships in one partner district, there might be another partner district we need to do some late work. So then talking about our remaining action steps, so we now have three action steps to carry out the end of this, um, Continuous School Improvement Plan. So first action step, we're going to be cataloging the existing collaborative relationships. So to this point, we don't have an exhaustive list of who all do we work with in the district? So who are all those business and industry partners? Who are our partners on the social, emotional side? What agencies are we working with? What agencies have we worked with in the past, but we're not working with anymore? So really trying to track all of that in a comprehensive way. Um, and then we're gonna do an initial valuation of quality. So not only are we working with them, what type of mileage are we getting out of it? How many students are being impacted? Is this a relationship that's growing? Is it something that's kind of stagnant? Or is it exists on paper but we're really not doing much with it? Second, we're gonna be refining the formal agreement process. So when we talked about sustainability, one of the things that we found, the key to keeping a relationship existing is having some type of a formal agreement with that entity, either an MOU, a contract, or a partnership agreement. So that way when people change, we may have a really good relationship with one business, but then that person who was a big advocate for Special School District leaves, that partnership might leave with them when they leave the company. Whereas if we have a formal agreement in place that says, nope, whether or not people change, this is something that is an organization, we've agreed to provide these pieces, you've agreed to provide those pieces, and it continues forward. So we're really focusing on that agreement process. And within that, we're looking at making sure that our formal agreements include an opportunity to measure the impact on students. So we're having an annual conversation with everyone that we have a formal agreement with of, at the end of the year, how many students benefited from this? And if it's not good for students, do we continue with this relationship? Because we really want to make sure that we're good stewards of district resources and we're putting all of our resources toward the things that are gonna have the biggest impact on students and student outcomes. Yes?
This makes perfect sense. Didn't we do this before?
So, we have a lot of agreements and contracts and MOUs, but if you look at them, there's not a clear structured template that we follow. So in some cases, uh, let's take some of our larger partners groups like BJC or Mercy, they're gonna give us, this is our standard agreement that we use. And so typically, we've been taking that standard agreement and just rolling with that standard agreement. What we want to do is then add on top of that an appendix that's agreeing to some additional steps to make sure that that business partner or industry partner is agreeing to make sure that we're evaluating this on annual basis for students.
Usually what happens is when we get the MOUs, they're boilerplate.
Yes.
These will now be individualized?
Yes. And not only that, we're taking what was that boilerplate, and what we've identified is there's really some key ingredients to a successful agreement and making sure that if it is boilerplate, that those key pieces are in there. For example, some of the agreements that were coming to the board, they never specified who is the key contact within that organization, either spelled out by what their role is or their title. And usually the person who signs the agreement at the bottom, they might be somebody that works high level in corporate but has nothing to do with the relationship with us on the ground. So making sure that you can quickly tell who are the key contacts and who are making sure that this happens and that what we're saying we're gonna provide to students is being provided to students. So adding in that layer of accountability, and that way if the person at SSD, who was especially, a lot of these are managed by teachers, if that teacher leaves and a new teacher comes in, they know exactly where to pick up.
So, when will this start? Because I'm, I'm anxious, I'm very, very, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, so... Yeah, so we are, we're going quickly right now. Um, so we've got a list of, right now it's about a dozen questions that we're sending over to our legal department to get some feedback from, because we've got a lot of legal questions of, as a district, can we ask this? Can we not ask this? Can we require this? Can we not require that? Uh, because oftentimes when we begin the MOU process, we'll get feedback that says, well, it has to go to their legal department as well? So just making sure whatever litmus test they have, whatever we put in there will pass their litmus test. So that's what we're working through right now. Our goal is that by the end of this year, we have that updated, uh, agreement process finalized. Um, because the other part is a lot of the agreements that have been coming to the board have just been MOUs, where we really want to silo it to, is it an MOU or is this more of, is this more casual? Because some of our business industry partners, an MOU is too formal, but maybe a partnership agreement that just has, these are some agreed upon pieces that we're going to do, they're going to do. Um, so we're looking at different structure. So does it need to be a contract? Does it need to be an MOU? Can it be more of an informal partnership agreement? We're looking at a couple of different ways to formalize the partnership process with all the entities that we work with. The other piece is that review process as well. Some of those agreements that we have carry on until infinity, that until one party walks away, it just keeps rolling forward. Uh, but we have other agreements that have to be reviewed on an annual basis, and so we're looking at what's best practice? Is it that we're revisiting agreements every three years? Are we revisiting them every five years? So that's what we're doing and we're looking at that review process.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I apologize, I get really excited about this, agreements are exciting. Yeah. So that's what happens when you have an undergrad in political science. So, third goal, or third, third area that we're working at, um, action step is increasing the number of collaborative relationships that meet a minimum quality standard. Um, so as I mentioned, the first one, we're looking at all the relationships we have currently and kind of giving an initial measure of quality. That's gonna give us a baseline, and then our goal is to move that baseline up. So making sure that the end goal is to get that all of our agreements that we have meet that quality standard, so that we are at the end evaluating the impact on students. That there's an annual evaluation of the relationship, and it's not just the teacher and the business partner, we're bringing in an administrator to the conversation as well, to bring in an outsider perspective. Um, also looking at the sustainability. So does the agreement specify who owns this for the district? Who owns this for the business or industry partner? And making sure those pieces are clearly defined, and that there's succession planning in place? That if a person walks away, does this continue to move forward? Or if they realign their structure and a department changes, does this partnership continue to exist to benefit our students? So it's really the focus that we have for Strategy 3.1. And I'm gonna pass it off to Christine Finger, who's gonna talk about Strategy 3.2.
Hey, good evening, I'm Christine Finger, I'm the Champion for Strategy 3.2. Um, and the overall goal of our strategy is implement processes for obtaining, analyzing, and using voice of customer data for planning and decision-making. Our strategy team also has a pretty broad membership, um, Communications Department, SSD Schools, and Career and Technical Education, our Partner Districts, our Family Engagement Division, and Student Services. So much like 3.1, this is a continuation from the previous version of the C-CIP, it's a combination of Strategies 3.1 and 3.2, we've combined those teams. Um, we did a lot of work in the last several years in refining processes to analyze and use voice of customer data, but what we realized is we didn't always have a clear lens as an organization of making sure we were gathering data we knew how we were going to use. So that is our refocused goal here. Um, to establish those priorities, um, and ensure that the district has the input it needs to make the decision. Um, we too have three main action items, supporting leadership, identification of priority areas for the district to improve success by providing that appropriate VOC data. Um, I know Dr. Bauer has talked to you about using VOC data as part of the strategic planning process, we are gonna look for opportunities to support that. The timing actually works out pretty well towards that process. And then once those priorities are established, we're gonna do an inventory of what we're already doing and look at that inventory and try to determine what we need to continue to do. Again, with that goal, making sure we have the data that we need. Next slide. And the third action step is really about making this sustainable, um, making sure once we get down to the things we really need to be doing, as we introduce new things, making sure there's a, a clear kind of gatekeeping process, to make sure that's continuing. Um, both in terms of activities and even just survey questions, kind of in that finer range. Next one. A lot shorter than Kevin's.
So I was currently doing those VOC annually.
Generally, yes, I'm talking about surveys.
Yeah.
Yes, this year's been a little, a little off because of a variety of things. I don't know, Dr. Keenan, you wanna speak to that at all? But generally, yes.
So we've done the climate survey and then we've done the other survey with the...
Engagement.
Engagement survey, yeah.
So the employee engagement and the climate survey is staff, students, and families. Yeah.
We do it annually.
Typically, this year's been a little off, yeah.
Yeah, they've been a minute for the last several years. Um, but yeah, we get at least three years of trend data with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, this spring the climate survey didn't happen, just because especially the student component of it's usually done in person, and we didn't have that opportunity to survey students in person.
So once we get the stat back into place, then we'll get that back. Any other questions? Well, that's a record.
Alright. Universal summer sports.
Oh, no, we have C-CIP four, yeah. Dr. Cunio is moving us along a little faster than we want, right?
We can be just as fast.
Yes.
Alright.
Alright. Um, we didn't have the topic of... Yeah, so this next one is the C-CIP, um, Goal Four, which is our Equity Goal, and so Dr. Bolton and Dr. Macklin will be, um, talking and highlighting the pieces around the C-CIP goal, and then Dr. Macklin is also gonna be presenting, um, to the board a draft of our equity plan. Um, this is something that we've been talking about for the last year, and know that the board has been talking for several years around this. And so, um, the intention is for us to get, be acclimated with it, get some ideas around it, but this is not only a one and done discussion, this is gonna be something we're gonna bring back, but we wanted to let you know the, the good work that's been going on thus far, um, since we've hired our new Executive Director of Teaching and Learning and our Director of Equity. Turn it over to the show.
Good evening, Dr. Brown, Dr. Cunio, Board of Education. My name's Molly Bolton, and I am the Executive Director of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability. And with me tonight have Dr. Macklin, who is the Director of Equity. Tonight, the purpose of our presentation is really, just like Dr. Keenan said, is to kind of update you on the equity work that we've done thus far, as well as updating you on the C-CIP four goal. So this slide probably looks very familiar to you. You can see our core values, um, with equity being in the center of our core values. And we're looking through the lens of equity, as Dr. Bauer likes to say, and all the work that we do. So now Dr. Macklin is going to talk to you a little bit about some of the equity work that he has spearheaded, um, and some of the plans that we have in place.
Superintendent Keenan, President Cunio, Vice President Brown, Director Asner, Director Fager, Director Goodman, and Director Patrow, thank you. And so, the equity lens, when you talk about the equity lens, clearly introduces a set of questions into the organization that help guide decision-making for every single piece of the framework. And so the lens is important and vital as it relates and correlates the student outcomes. What is equity? Equity, equality, and diversity often get lumped together, but they truly can stand on their own. They each are their own entities. And so equity, access, equitable participation are interchangeable and fundamentally have the same meaning. And so when you talk about equity, a couple of key words stick out, such as access, such as interchangeable. By equity, we mean here at SSD, the full, full meaningful participation of students with disabilities and high-quality programs established for all students. One of the key pieces is that when people talk about equity, is they think that you have to water it down for students, but you, you also, you raise that, that high-quality participation in programming for students. That's, DESI's definition of equity. And so when you look at DESI's definition of equity, educational equity exists when an intentional focus on learning outcomes and allocation of resources ensure that each student, most definitions say all, but DESI says each student, particularly those from historically underrepresented, underserved, and marginalized groups, excel through purposeful engagement, rigorous instruction, relevant, and educational experience. And so those marginalized groups are not only race, not only gender, but also socioeconomic status, ensuring that all students have the ability to be successful and learn. So when we talk about the process that took place here at SSD, it's going to developing a draft definition, again, draft definition, one more time, draft definition, uh, the process that took place. And so we looked at a couple of different definitions, and these are just four of them here, um, but of course, one of them is DESI. And so with DESI being that skeletal system and that backbone and that overarching theme, taking a look at that definition. And then the next definition there was actually by the partnerships in educational equity there at the bottom right, um, here, which eliminates educational barriers based on gender, race, ethnicity, national origins, color, disability, age, or any other protected group status. And that was actually from the National Educational Partnerships in Equity.
Tell you what, I, the second definition, I hate to define anything in the negative, and that's what it's doing, eliminating. And I, I mean, I, I thought your other day, yeah, I thought the first one sounded good, but the second one seemed to me, it's telling me what we shouldn't do rather than what we should do.
And so that's why President Cunio, that we took four different definitions and merged it into being able to, into design and develop the SSD definition. And so, again, a process consists of examining current equity definitions to ensure broader level thinking, right? And so the next definition here is actually by the Center for Education, um, who does a lot of work, um, who's done a lot of work since 1999 in developing and assisting schools and organizations develop framework. Equity, we mean the full and meaningful participation of students with disabilities in high-quality programs established for all students by emerging school-to-work systems. And the last definition here, which is from, uh, the Department of Education here, dot gov, access to world-class education can help to ensure that all children in this country with dreams and determination can reach their potential and succeed. So when you see four different definitions, you see a couple of buzzwords that stick out from you, from the four. You see access, you see opportunity, you see resource, you see achievement, you sure, you see success. And so from that, from those four pieces, the process consists of examining current equity definitions to ensure a broader level of thinking. There were a number of definitions, definitions that were actually examined, and those are the four that brought here for you guys to take a look at. And then also the process focused on receiving key feedback from district principals, uh, directors, uh, C-CIP 4.1 team, and then also district leadership. And so to ensure that there was key collaboration in developing the definition. And so, the draft, again, draft, one more time, draft, SSD equity definition. Equity is the process of actively and intentionally ensuring access to resources and opportunities for all students regardless of barriers or circumstance. Actively, intentionally, access, resource, opportunities, barriers, or circumstances. The reason why a definition is so important is because in order for anyone to have impact on their work, especially as it relates to Special School District, there needs to be a backbone. especially as it relates to special school districts, there needs to be a backbone. And to have that definition is that existing backbone force to be able to move forward. Without a key equity definition, you're spinning in your wheels and not being able to have that clear definition. The Harvard Institute, actually in 2010, focused on establishing equity definitions, and that was their key foundation as it relates to school and organizations.
Is it time to provide input, or would you rather we wait?
Uh, sure, you can.
Uh, draft comment? Yeah, draft.
Thank you, I appreciate it, get the draft.
So we've talked a lot about equity definition in the board over these years about exploring equity. And something that we always said was that equity does not always mean equal access. It often means more for the people who need more. And that was an important part of our personal definition that I think the board generated. And I don't see that in any of these definitions. I mean, I'm wondering what your feeling is on that.
Correct, so I, I think one of the key pieces is when you talk about ensuring access to resources and opportunities for all students regardless of barriers and circumstances. So, the key piece between equity and equality, equity and equality, equity and equality. Equality is almost ensuring that students learn. And so, equity would be the outcome and the process of what happens. And so, in the definition, when you see opportunities for all students regardless of various circumstances, that will cover that piece. But the good thing about this, Director Goodman, is it is a draft. And so, because it is a draft, we can definitely look at modifying and adding those feedbacks.
I'd like to hear what others have to say, but I think that that's something we need to specifically been more intentional about as opposed to inferring and having it be more implicit in... But what do others think about that? It's going to be our, our definition we abide by, right?
Yes.
No, I think that one of the things that I, that jumped out in the last meeting is to talk about students. We've talked about throughout the organization itself, and every aspect of what we represent as an institution. So I noticed that in there, it was all students. And so, I didn't know if that was just to be aimed toward just students, or is this a definition that we're talking about as an institution that affects everyone who is within the bounds of the institution?
The definition would affect everyone, however, students are the focal point. And so, when you talk about students being the focal point of the work, that's what stands out, and that's what jumps at you in the definition. And so, again, because it is a draft, there's also pieces that, that are involved in many definitions across the country. So there's systems thinking, you don't see that in the definition. Again, I'm going broad in equity terms. But being able to allow those key pieces are there, and that's why we're here for feedback.
So do you know what you think, you've been through all these equity discussions, you've been handling all these years?
Yeah, what I've, what I've seen is what equity is not. And, uh... Could you flash your definition back up on the board?
To me, that says you're going to make sure everybody gets the same opportunities and resources despite barriers. But it doesn't say that some may need more than others.
Definitely take that feedback.
But I think that it says intentionally ensuring, if we're going to talk about needing more, that's where the intention comes in, that it's in fact, you recognize that there is a disparity in reference to a student or our preference within the institution, that we intentionally ensure that we make all efforts to create those opportunities.
I guess I would just rather be more explicit.
Okay, what if you had a, you know, what if you had a chance? When you, when you talk about equity is a process of actively and intentionally, since you already got an invite, throw another invite, into, into providing and ensuring access. Or, no, I would say ensuring and providing. In other words, you're going to ensure they have access, and if they don't have access, you're going to provide access to it.
It's not, I mean, I know you probably don't have those words in it, but it's something to me is more like two needed resources. You know, as opposed to to make it seem like there's a differing level of resources.
Right, because I know there's that graphic that you've shown of Dr. Macklin, where it's the kids, you know, looking at their baseball field. It's not just about, and he had that in another presentation you presented, but that basically, it's not saying you all get to say.
Right.
It's about wherever you're at, we're making sure that whatever circumstance, whatever background, disability, race, gender, that we're ensuring that we're providing the necessary resources for the, to support the students in that environment.
Not, not, you know, what if you had ensuring access to all necessary resources? That doesn't, that's necessary, that would depend upon where you're at. In other words, some, some districts may not need that resource. Now, the district may need that resource.
Right.
So if you added something like ensuring, sharing access and providing all necessary resources and opportunities, you'd be saying that you would take over some of the deficits. And that's what we've been doing now.
But it says regardless of barriers and circumstances, and I think those things come under those, under those aspects of the definition.
Well, that just says though, that we're providing access. Pardon me, it just says that we're ensuring access, doesn't mean that we're providing it.
So you're asking that provision be put in there?
Yeah, because right now, we're just saying, we'll ensure that they have access. But what if they don't have them? We're not saying we're going to provide them. Shouldn't we be saying also, we're going to provide that resource?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's more intentional that way.
And again, we're just looking at this the first time in, in my...
Well, and I'd rather say something like resources to allow each child to succeed where there are, yeah, or something regardless of barriers or circumstances.
Right, right. Um, yeah, no, this is good because then what we'll do is we'll take it back and kind of keep working with it. Dr. Macklin, you've been working with different groups too, you have a committee that you...
Yes, yes.
So that's where it's good to see getting that, bringing this back to down to them.
I clearly don't want to nitpick here, I...
Well, no, and, and...
We need to hear from you guys too.
100%, and the definition is almost what comes from now, that living live document, because that's what feedback's for, right? To go to modify and change and adjust it to get that different perspective, which is...
Well, what I would like to see is have this shout-out to us in an email, where we can see it not at 7:45 at night, and come up with some decision by 8 o'clock. But I'd like that chance to think about it, look at it, and get you back some feedback.
We'll bring it back at another date, so we'll give you guys a little time when we're fresher.
Anything, Dr. Asner, you want to...
No, I didn't, I, I actually, meaning I've always taken equity to mean that the level, the playing field is not level, and so, some people need to have more support than others. That's, now, this is a very negative word, I apologize. Where in the U20 here, I'm not sure that equity is technically a process. I think that's why a lot of those other definitions start with, they look, educational equity exists, what? But this, that may be oversaid.
But really, tonight, the intention was just to bring this draft to you guys and to get these thoughts to take back too, and, and work on it for more. I mean, this is, we really intended, Dr. Cooney, for this to just be your initial reaction, not to make a decision, for sure.
And then, also, in a larger perspective, we talked about the study of 2014, the study of 2017, so moving really from theory to action, and getting to that point where we have a clear, definite definition for the district.
See, Dr. Macklin, I really want to, what you said there is, for 10 years, and this is the decade of equity for us, either the decade or the decadent, because we haven't done anything with it. We've talked about it, we've played with it for 10 years. That's why, if this is the backbone that we need to hang something on, this was going to get into something real instead of just sitting around talking about it.
And again, moving back to...
That's a great thing.
Again, moving back to, to Dr. Bolton's statement, that's why we're here to, to really force exposure, to go to move from that theory to action place. You can only stay in theory so long before you need to have a definite action, so that's where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, we also have a draft of the framework there, and so, I would ask you to prove that, not tonight, here at 7:45, but to prove that, and to take a look at that. Framework really consists of just six key pieces, and so, I'll cover that real briefly here. The history of SSD and equity collaborated that has been correlated together. The equity definition is also in there. And then, also, the procession or the equity lens, what a clear equity lens looks like, and what that looks like especially as it correlates to SSD. The big picture and the ultimate goal, special school districts and equity, three essential questions that we always ask ourselves as it relates to equity, and especially student outcomes, and then guiding principles. And so, I ask you to prove that as your time, but again, this is from theory to action, theory to action.
So we'll, we'll bring it back at the, I'll tell, let you know when Friday, when we'll bring this back to you as a session. So you'll have the draft of this, and then we'll be able to go much more in depth in terms of you review it, get your notes, and then we'll work through that.
May I say, Dr. Macklin, though, that I did have a chance to prove, and it was very well done.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, thank you, thank you.
So the next part of our presentation, we're going to move into the C SIP goal update. So the C SIP goal four is to ensure equitable staffing levels and access to quality services with the strategy 4.1 being to collaborate with customers, stakeholders, programs, and departments within SSD to ensure processes are in place to achieve equity in student outcomes through educational practices, business operations, and allocation of resources. The milestones that were developed to support this strategy, the first being develop that clear and standardized definition of equity for special school districts, and as you can see where we are with the work in that, building that equity framework for the district to utilize that framework in decision-making. So when you're looking and giving feedback on that framework, please use that lens, that this document will be used in future decision-making. Audit the district policies and procedures and processes from that lens of equity, and provide recommendations to the policy committee. And develop a learning plan to build the mindset and capacity of all of our staff to increase equitable outcomes for students.
Can I say I like that terminology, equitable outcomes? Because whatever each person needs to put it in to ensure that the outcomes are equitable, I like that wording.
Thanks. So, Dr. Macklin, we'll kind of update you on what the strategy team has done thus far.
And so, when you look at determining the purpose of the committee, right, the 4.1, why are we here, what's our ultimate goal, what's our big picture, what's we're trying to establish? Discuss the goals and the milestones, and so, where do we want to end up at the future, right? What are those milestones, which Dr. Bolton just went over? And to create, to accomplish those and create a common understanding of the committee. Discuss the components of the definition of equity. So just as tonight, we oscillated and vacillated over the definition of equity, it's the same thing that the committee has done, same thing that department leads have done, and so, really coming up with that key piece, components of the definition of equity. Discuss the key components of equity framework is also key. So, again, just updating here on the progress of the committee. Review the draft of the definition and review the draft of the equity framework. So I'm very proud in October of what the committee has accomplished and what is on set to, to be done by the end of the year.
A very short period of time, and a lot of work has been put into this, so your, your decade of equity will be moving forward.
I have a question, yes, a quick one. I can see equity in this as it is, as defined in the role of students. But are we going to use that term when we talk about hiring or purchasing? Is equity still in there because none of the definitions that I saw would have, would have had anything that was outside of students?
So equity is, is really a term that permeates the organization, and that's why the framework is there.
That, okay, if I can, then, your definition bordered completely on, as you had said, Curtis. When, if, if, I thought you could define everything under equity as related to students. But when it came to having a role in purchasing or having a role in hiring, that would not...
And, and the reason why students are at the outcome is because if you have true equity in purchasing, if you have true equity in hiring practices, if you have true equity in any other systems organization, the students will benefit, and that's the ultimate outcome from that. You can always, you can always add and modify systems in that word, but when you're looking at the ultimate goal and how students are impacted, that's why students are at the forefront of that.
But I heard other discussions, Dan, where we...
We define the difference between, that's why I was wondering.
Diversity in hiring and diversity in contracting, not necessarily equity in the area.
That's what, that's what I mean, so that's why I was saying, this equity would not have a role in that. That would go back to the diversity kind of stuff, correct?
Yes.
Or, or am I...
No, you're right on that, because that's more the definition that we're looking at. And we are a public school organization supporting students across the country.
Correct.
And that's why we're making sure that that focus is on that. Now, the other pieces that we do want to look at in terms of, and I'm talking, you know, explore exploration around this with Dr. Macklin is around policies, and that's where the board gets to, that's really where your level comes into play, in not only adopting a draft equity framework and plan that's embedded throughout the organization, but it's also providing you, when you work through the policy committee, to provide a policy on how we support equity, diversity, and all type of things within the organization.
So, and Dr. Keenan is exactly right there. When you talk about the impact that a board of education has, it is that policy statement that's derived. And so, no matter who's in the room, because policy is there, it becomes law. And so, that policy statement is the impact that a board of education...
Right, they're not, they're standardized draft, but, but I think that we will, we will need to split off equity from diversity, not that either one, I'm not saying one is more important than the other.
Well, and you want to be, you want to be clear when you're talking about terms. So equity, diversity, equality, race are all different terms that stand on their own.
Okay.
They should not be mixed and correlated when, when they are interacting. If someone says, I want equity in hiring, they don't mean equity, they want diversity in hiring.
Correct.
Right, and so, understanding those key, common core principles as it relates to social justice terms are vital and important.
So, if, if that in fact is, you know, I understand where you're coming, I think I do. I would agree equity is a term that we should use where we seek equity for our students. We would seek diversity in our hiring, is that correct?
That is correct.
When is that...
That is correct, and so, actually, I would say that I met with Dan Kelly today, and I actually sit on C SIP 2.1, 2.2, where we're looking at just diverse hiring practice. And I, and I will say that Dan Kelly and every sector have done just a great job, because the first thing in understanding that you need diversity is understanding that you have lack of diversity. And so, being able to understand those key pieces is the first step in moving forward into, into the hiring more diverse candidates. One of the things that we talked about today, and I know that I am on the clock...
Oh, wow.
One of the things that we talked about today is that when you talk about African-American males in the country, so in the world, in the United States, less than 2% of teachers or educators are African-American men. So setting a goal to say, I want 50 African-American males or 100 African-American males, is not obtainable. But what you can say, what you can say is I want to increase that percentage, or I want to provide a feeling of efficacy with my diverse staff who is working in my district.
Yes, I look forward to your work study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, now...
Now we have the universal summer support. All right.
So, good evening again, Wendy Pendergrass, Chief Academic Officer. I am going to talk to you about a draft, no, kidding. An idea of a universal summer supports program that we have been working on tentatively. So, first slide, please. So as you all are aware, COVID-19 hit us in March of 2020, caused unfortunate closures... So as you all are aware, COVID-19 hit us in March of 2020, caused unfortunate closures in all of our schools and area. The U.S. Department of Education provided special education services called, and the IEPs, to the greatest extent possible, which is what we delivered. Despite our greatest efforts, there were parents that were dissatisfied with the level of service or the manner of delivery that was provided. Some parents felt their child did not benefit from the services that we provided. Next slide. So SSD has recognized the potential impact extended to our school closures, both in our SSD buildings and our career tech buildings, to augment the educational experience of students who have received support due to this really unique circumstance that came out of COVID-19. The district is proposing the idea of a universal summer support program that we would offer during the summer of 2021. This would be a one-time offering for the '21 summer. Next slide. So, one of the things that we started looking at, being the district and who we are, the services that we provide, is what really would be the difference between the universal summer support and extended school year, knowing that we provide for students that qualify through an IEP process, extended school year. The USS program would be to all students that were residents in the St. Louis County system with an IEP currently enrolled in our schools, programs, and partner districts that experienced the school closure. The USS would not be IEP-based, it would be limited related services that would be provided through consultation of relevant IEP team members. So the IEP team members would sit down and have a conversation about what we could support. Educational activities in the areas of literacy and numeracy, so we would focus on that. And when I say that the IEP team would dictate, they're not going to dictate the supports, what they're going to do is help guide, just like they would be doing for any type of summer programs that we would offer. And it is not intended, I can't see it because it's-
High faith.
Thank you. It's not intended to provide faith.
Which is free and appropriate public, yeah, I want you to explain, yes.
Yes.
Not intended to-
Provide, right. Free and appro-
It's a supplemental program.
Yes.
Faith is tied to your IEP process, and it's free and appropriate public education so that families are not charged for services that we're providing for IEP. And so, the difference is ESY is faith, it is intended to address the IEP, where this is more of a universal instructional educational program that we'll offer in the summer.
Do I bring people up if they miss something, or if they were not making the same level of progress, the school year was virtual?
And for general-
Yeah.
Work-study habits and things that most-
Yes, yes.
The IEP requirements.
Yes, 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 yes. So enrichment or enhancement of activities that we would provide in the afternoon sessions. ESY, just to clarify, open only to students who qualify, as I said earlier, through the IEP process. IEP-based, so the services are actually delivered per the minutes that would be in the IEP. We have separate pages in the IEP that specifically talks about the goals that cover extended school year, the minutes, and the services. Delivers only services needed to prevent regression. So some of the things that we look at for students qualifying for extended school year or ESY would be regression recruitment, regression or recruitment, the access to the services during the summer, there's a variety of things that we would look at that mandates ESY. It is intended to provide faith, which Dr. Cuneo and Dr. Keenan explained, and students eligible for ESY may also participate in that program as well. And so that's why, one of the reasons that we kind of looked, if you go to the next page, the timelines currently for our, currently the timelines that we are offering for extended school year is June 7th through July 1st, 2021. It's Monday through Thursday, and it's in the afternoon. That runs the afternoon of our extended school year programs. So that, we wanted to provide that opportunity for students that also qualify for ESY. We wanted to run this in the afternoon, so those students could participate as well in the morning and the afternoon. We still need to work with our locations in our partner districts. We are hoping that through conversations that we could use spaces in our partner districts that will also provide the space for ESY. We offer ESY in our buildings, but also we offer those services in partner districts. So working with them. Students who participate in ESY in the morning would be able to have the option to stay for the USS support. Enrichment activities would be focused on literacy, numeracy, social emotional learning, which are some of those areas that might have been missed, or not missed, but some of the areas that we need to fine tune and enrich and improve. Students who qualify for transportation as a related service will also get transportation in the USS. So, transportation as a related service is provided in the IEP, those students would also get provided transportation for USS.
Can I insert now any slides?
Yep.
Okay, so even if they are not qualified for ESY, but they do want to do the USS, they still can have transportation?
So if they get transportation as a related service in the IEP, they would have that. Currently, right now, we have, we are working with Kenny Mulder, the Director of Transportation, to see how many students above who qualify for extended school year also qualify for related service, so we're working those numbers out. Yes.
Okay, so even if that's only the hiring, would just be hiring during the afternoon?
That's a great, that's a great, that's-
Is that already?
Yeah, it's the next page. So, remaining factors that we have to consider, because this is really never done before with us, and so we're being creative and kind of working through things. Students who participate in the morning session, again, would participate, would have the option to participate in the afternoon session. We would provide, either we're working, I'm working with Director Dr. Hogg on lunch or snacks during the breaks and the sessions. We would have to work on locations, of course, in our schools, in our technical schools, we have, we control that space, right? So that won't be a problem, so we will be working with our liaisons. Dr. Keenan will be speaking to superintendents to see what space would be available in our partner districts. We would have to look on, we have to consider, during the summertime months, our schools get, have a lot of construction or projects are going on, so we need to work with our facilities department to make sure that what we're doing is not impeding anything. We would also be working with our facilities for cleaning. So there's that that we have to work out. Application, Director Goodman is what you were talking about, we would offer, we offer application processes for extended school year. We would also offer an application process for USS and hire staff for both. If a person wanted to do extended school year in the afternoon, we could, we could do that. It's a separate process, but we could most definitely do that.
So if you, I'm sorry, if you had a student who wanted to do USS who did not qualify for ESY-
Yes.
Would want to USS and had a pair of supplies for them during the school year, would you support that student with a pair as well, or not for USS?
I think that's something that we have to consider and make sure that we have, the most important is make sure our students are supported and covered, so I don't know if there's natural options that we could have, supporting that student in the classroom, but that's something we would definitely consider. Yes. Yes, sir.
I think it's a great idea, in general. But my concern is about the fact that it's a half-day program for a few reasons. Number one, I think in terms of what would truly be helpful for families, would be to offer them a full-day program, not a half-day program. So appears that's been brought, and if costs slash logistics would make that a true barrier. My other issue is, we just finished talking earlier about the technical schools and the issues they had with transportation in the middle of the day for families, and now we're talking about starting a half-day program, starting again in the middle of the day and only provide transportation to some students, again, through the stretch of equity, are we unfairly analyzing or making this more difficult for families who don't have that transportation or a parent slash whoever is available to, you know, bring those kids in in the middle of the day?
Very good point. That's something that we can continue to explore, absolutely.
I love this idea, the only thing is, can we keep pushing? This is a supplemental, this is not something that was required.
Yes, this is completely supplemental.
To open us up to be sued that we thought we had not provided enough services, therefore we're throwing this in. This is a supplemental service.
We're trying to be very proactive, trying to, to, to really-
Provide additional services that are needed.
Yes, sir.
Some districts have done this when they've had hurricane, or they've had, you know, natural, you know, disaster, and so they're not mandated to do it. We're just saying that, you know, if we're a special school district, and if we are able to provide an extension of learning for students throughout the summer and be able to do that and still fulfill the ESY component, but also tap on additional pieces of it, that we're willing to, you know, put that effort out there to support our students, because we know our students will benefit from this by extending their learning process for another four weeks throughout the summer. And that, and, you know, if we can help our students not have to regress, even though some of the students in ESY benefit from it, but this has given them another additional piece of it. Now, ESY is really clear about progression recruitment, but we've also seen where if you can extend learning throughout the summer, you lose the, if you reduce the amount of time that students are away from the classroom, you might be able to move them into the summer, start up again in August, and then be able to get back into their process of learning. So, I think you will-
My crystal ball, because you will have a good number of kids who are ESY in the morning and sign up for your event in the afternoon. Firstly, two, three years ago, started where they had ESY in the morning and then special camp, you know, like our camp, where either camp or the other school, where ESY is free camp, you pay for, but parents send you, you know, you pay for half-day, but kind of fully.
Yeah, and it's both, the reason why we were moving towards the half-day was, this would provide a full day free of charge for the family. So we didn't want, which we will continue to explore, Dr. Asner, the opportunity for students that qualify for ESY not to be able to get the USS, so that's why we kind of offset it in the morning and in the afternoon, but I will continue to work with our group to bring up the points that you made, absolutely. So, next slide, please. Some things that we will continue to work on as well would also be our vocational skills program. So what does that look like for our students in the vocational skills program? And also, a little bit later, I'll talk to you about career tech ed. So we're not just providing this for students with IEPs, but everyone that, and budget is going to be something that I'll work with Dr. Hogg with when it comes to hiring and staff. He has been more than willing to help us out through the process. Thank you.
So it looks great, I, I've been talking elementary, so that's always-
This is all of it, yeah, we're proposing all of it. So we are, we are proposing K through 12 in our buildings, our population, that is, our 12-plus, and then I am working with Director Casey Wisdom to see what that could look like in our VS preprograms, and like I said, a couple slides later, I've been working with Director Andert about what this looks like for our career and tech ed. So, some suggested timelines that we had started working on is make, kind of finalize everything and make an announcement November 30th, that would be released to our families. January 1st, we would open possibly applications for students to enroll and start with the staff employment. By the end of January, we should have an idea of what students would be there and what staff we still need. And then March 1st, we would do a letter, or about that time, to our families with location, times, and et cetera. So we would, that's a suggested timeline, we're still working through that. Next slide. For CTE options. So when Kevin and I were having a conversation about what really could this look like when you're talking about our career and tech ed centers, practical application time is tied to certification, I can't say that word, certification. So we would have to look at what shops would provide us or what classrooms would provide us that the opportunity to our students, additional seat time required during the month of June, student interest that would reflect in what programs we would offer, and then CTE instructors must be willing to participate. So, they're very, they're very important to this process, so we need to make sure that they are on board as well. Some of the programs that we were thinking about is, of course, our automotive technology, our collision repair, some of our construction clusters. Cosmotology is really something we were looking at, because that is seat time in order for them to take their assessments, they do need to have a certain amount of time and practice before they can sit for their exam. Diesel technology, firefighting and EMT, another coursework where you have to have very specific timelines before you sit to take the exam. Health science, precision machining, and welding. So those were some of the CTE offerings or options that we were looking at providing. Next slide, please. Questions.
If we can afford it, this is fantastic.
So, yeah, next steps, we'll be continuing to refine some of the pieces, you know, what's the full day versus half-day versus transportation. Right. And so we'll bring that back to you guys, but we just wanted to let you know that we're concerned, to see if you guys are, as a board, are okay with this moving forward for this. This will, this will impact our budget, but I also feel that our budget is focused on educating students, and if we can do it in this way to support our students and our families and extend it over the summer, I think we can be able to work through those pieces of it. Yeah. One thing I'm really excited about is we have phenomenal educators and paraprofessionals that support our students on a daily basis, and this opens up the opportunity to kind of extend that, especially with our paraprofessional workforce in the afternoon, the extra support that they could get. So I'm very excited, I really hope-
This is a win-win for everybody.
I hope so, I really hope so. Not, and like you said, Dr. Cuneo, not that we, we're just trying to be very, to get out, yeah, to get out in front of it and to provide that extra support for families.
I just don't want to tie to faith at all.
It is not.
That means we didn't do something.
Yes.
No, we've been tracking it, we've been doing everything in our power, it's just the fact is that we're saying, everything in our power might have affected some students that we feel like would benefit, yeah, would benefit some.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
I'll keep you posted, thank you.
It's unfortunate that we cannot make the announcement the same day that we make the announcement for schools.
Right.
We're going to tweak that a little bit, and we'll probably do an announcement more in November, and then, you know-
It would just be nice, because we're going to have somebody upset whenever we go to schools, and it would be nice to know that they have something else, because I know everybody's going for life. From teachers who could get extra money, to paraprofessionals who could get extra money, to parents who are going to get extra services, I mean, it would-
Even the ones for, even the free services, because now they'll be providing lunch, you can't respect them, first drivers.
Yes, financial, the financial impact, yes, like Dr. Keenan said, if we can do this, if we can really work, which it is a great opportunity for several, several groups of people.
All right, now we can do-
Thank you.
End of our board session, so would you close out?
Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? All in favor? All right. All votes. Motion carries. Thank you, Julie. Now we go to, can we, are we?
Can we seize the way?
Go. Can we log up?